Just have a couple of announcements here tonight. One, just a reminder, tomorrow night is Neighbor's Night Out and it will be primarily taking place at the East End Rec from 6:00 to 8:00 with all kinds of food and family activities and encourage everybody to come out for that and thank Target for sponsoring it. And I know there are others planned as well, one at Willowbrook and maybe some others I don't know about, but tomorrow night, Neighbor's Night Out, East End Rec. And want to wish happy 100th birthday to Grace Bessek who will be celebrating her birthday on Wednesday. I'm looking forward to having lunch with her at Calista Court. And don't normally wish a lot of people happy birthday, that's usually Georgia's area there, but tonight I'd also like to say a happy birthday to my mother who's going to be 100 years old this Saturday. She's worried about whether she's going to make it or not, but I think the odds in Vegas are pretty good that she, the smart money's on her making it, I think, but it'll be fun. Also, I know I speak for the council here, we all received a lot of emails over the past number of days concerning air monitoring for frac sand or silica dust and there was an impression that it was going to be on the agenda tonight, it is not, but I do want people to know that the city is arranging a meeting with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the city, our Planning Commission, and our Environmental Quality Board. And we'll be meeting sometime soon, as soon as it can be arranged, to discuss that issue and other issues as a group. So just stay tuned for that, that will be coming up. And that's all I have, now the city manager, if she has anything.
Nothing today.
Okay, we'll have roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is an application for off-sale liquor license for midtown wine and spirits. Effective dates are September 1st through June 30th. I'd move to approve that request.
Second motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 3.2 is the license agreement for the Great Dakota Gathering, September 12th through the 14th. Members of the committee are here if you have questions. I'd move to approve that license agreement.
I would second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam, any discussion?
Just a comment to thank the members for putting these events together every year and continuing to build that relationship between those of us who are here now and those of us who have ancestors that were here before us. Thank you for that.
The theme, I forget the title of the theme here this year, so we are, we are all one, or something like that.
We are all related.
We are all related, there we go. Anybody from the organization wish to say anything?
Go ahead. Mayor and council, just, there's a couple people here that are, that I'll introduce. Bunny Welly is one, Sally is here, Mike Kennedy's on that group, so yeah, they've worked hard. I do want to say that the schedule that's on there may change a little bit, so that's a tentative schedule, but at the time we had to have this in, it wasn't quite finished, but it's pretty close to what it was last year and there's a few changes. Couple things that are added that will be, is we don't have the hockey matches that are on there, and we're also going to have, if it works out, the lacrosse group playing from Canada against Winona group, so that's another added thing. So, other than that, pretty much the same, the map is similar, the events are similar. Take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mayor?
Go ahead.
State your name and address, please.
Bunny Welly, Gilmore Avenue, Winona. We do have a few changes this year, we have, we have really, we have the education day on Friday, which was like last year for the, all the third graders in the public and private schools, but we don't have any events in the evening, we did that, we did last year. This year we're having competition dancing, which is new for us, and that brings in a lot of dancers, and that will be on Saturday only. There will not be a unity feast on Saturday like we usually do. The unity feast will be on Sunday at noon. And we will have also demonstration dancing on Sunday from, at 1:00, a group from Prairie Island. Singers and dancers will come and explain the dances, explain the meaning of the drums and things like that, so we would have liked to have it in reverse order so that you could see the demonstration first and then have the competition dancing afterwards, but we couldn't make that arrangement. And then there is a spiritual service in the morning on Sunday.
Do you need any volunteers?
We do need volunteers and we're just getting that set up, so get ready, please. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? We have a motion. We'll vote, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 3.3 is a request to close High Forest Street for a block party on September 6th.
Moved to approve that request.
I'll second.
Okay, moved to approve the request.
George moved and Michelle seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Request to close Third Street for Blooming Ground's grand reopening on Friday, September 12th. I'd move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 3.5 is a request by Audio Designs to hold their annual crank it up car audio competition, August 23rd at the J.C. Shelter.
I'd move to approve the request and I'm appreciative that they moved it to a less residential area, because I know that was a concern last year.
Okay, we have a motion from Michelle, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Al, discussion?
I concur with councilperson Alexander's comments.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 3.6 is the request for the Color Dash 5K on Sunday, September 21st, and members of their committee are here if you have questions.
I would move to approve the license agreement and the closure of Prairie Island Road.
Second. Motion by Pam, seconded by Paul, discussion? Al.
I'm just curious about, you know, we've talked about this initially and there was a concern about cleanup and I understand from the information we have in our packet that there have been arrangements made to do so, and my question is to city staff, is that satisfactory, and I guess I asked our manager to respond to that. Or Chad, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Mayor and council, Al, you have to, I didn't hear the end part of your question. If we're satisfied with their cleanup plan?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, staff has reviewed with the representatives from Color Dash and we're satisfied with their cleanup plan. We did have some concerns initially, but they have presented several options for cleanup, including a proposal with Goodview Fire Department to come in and hose down the area following the event, and so, again, we had trepidation to begin with, we're, we are satisfied though with their plan.
And you're monitoring the after?
Yes, and we'll monitor after the event. The good news is in regards to the dates and the timing of this event is we do have an event following the Color Dash that week, it's Boats and Bluegrass, starting out at Prairie Island following this event, and so we'll be monitoring closely because of that event as well.
Okay. Thank you, Chad. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 3.7 is a request to eliminate handicap parking stall on East Third Street. I'd move to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George, discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is angle parking on Main Street between Fourth Street and Levy Park.
I'd move to introduce the ordinance for adoption. I would second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam, discussion? Al.
I would like to offer an amendment.
Okay.
That the area delineated for the diagonal parking only be north of Second Street and not north of Fourth.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? I guess not.
Okay.
Motion fails for a second. Any other discussion? Al?
Yeah, I'm still opposed to this. After I was initially opposed, I've heard from other folks that also expressed the concerns that I share, and there's several of them. I'm still concerned about delivery vehicles with one lane instead of two. I think we'll suffer more blocked access through Main Street with those delivery vehicles. I'm concerned that cyclists will be invisible to cars that are backing out of those places. It's, it's difficult enough as they ride along parallel parked cars, watching for doors that are open, but let alone a vehicle backing out would have some issues. And I think reference has been made to Main Street being historically delineated with that style of parking, and that's probably true, but we have to remember that the center medians weren't as large or nonexistent at those times, and also that vehicles at that time were much smaller, shorter, and not as wide. And I understand every once in a while, there's an occasional semi that travels down Main Street to get to Second Street, whether it's on the truck route or not, I'm not certain. But for those reasons, I'm going to oppose this. I know there's a need for additional parking, but I think the need for additional parking is driven by what I call the front door theory, that people will find a place to park that's closest to the visibility of a front door of the business they're going to. And in downtown areas like ours, certainly there is issue with having to park around the block. However, in larger, big box stores, when you park in a large parking lot and can see the front door, it doesn't seem to be as much of an issue. So for those reasons, I don't think we need to limit the number of lanes on Main Street from Fourth to Levy.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, George?
I've heard from many people on this for it and not for it, and one recommendation that came up in talking about, you know, it could go down to one lane, and as one person mentioned, in fact, two people mentioned, just remove the center median if that road becomes too small, because he says no one maintains it anyway. So that's, you know, an option as, you know, as well too. When did that median go in? Anyone know? Okay.
I guess late 60s or something like that.
Okay, I mean, I'm going to support this tonight, vote for it, but like I say, you know, after, after six months, let's relook at it to see how this is doing, you know, if it's doing what we want it to do, if there are any, you know, major traffic concerns, maybe we need to do something with the median. Is that, everybody pretty kind of agree to that, we, you know, look at it in six months?
Certainly willing to look at it in six months, should this pass. Al?
I appreciate your comments, George, but I don't think, I think this was brought up as an easy way to acquire additional parking. The only cost to the city is striping and perhaps some signage. Removing the median is very expensive, and I would be opposed to that for that reason.
Any other comments?
I, I'm going to look for it, I've heard people for and against it as well. I think that the, just as it was brought to us to approve this, we have the opportunity in a period of time, whether it be six months or a year or two years or whatever, to readdress it if it does become a problem. So I think it's worth the opportunity to gain the parking spaces now, see if it helps the downtown businesses, which I believe it will, because I'm one of those people that if I can't park close, I don't stop.
Exactly.
And, and so as a result of that, I'm going to support it and see what happens.
Al?
Well, just a comment, that was my purpose of the amendment, which was just to use that part of Main Street from Second Street to the levy, but again, you know, whatever it does, I guess.
Okay, George?
Does that then become exempt from alternate side parking?
No, the rest of the city, the alternate side parking is, still incorporates the diagonal parking, but it's, because that side of the street they can't park.
I know there's some areas where we've gone where it is angle parking, where it is exempt from that, but this would not be.
I think there's one spot that's exempt, but the rest of them are not exempt.
Other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
One. Motion carries.
Item 4.2 is the alley dedication request between Gilmore and Mark Street and Cummings and Francis.
I had a request from some of the neighbors affected wishing to speak, so if you'd like to come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, Tom Ryan, I'm at 1026 Gilmore, and I guess I'm the guy that driving this whole boat about getting the alley fixed. I've been there for 30 years now and this has been a problem ever since I lived there. I've worked with the city in some respects, the engineer and the street department guy over those years, to try to get some relief from the pooling of water in the middle of the alley. Alley's almost 900 feet, so it's a problem, and if any of you drove through there today after it rained, you can kind of see what's going on back there. But summertime is an issue. The real issue is to try to get the water out of there in the fall before it freezes. The thing really does get to be a nightmare certain years when the thawing and freezing creates ruts in the road. Now, I just bought a new car and the bottom of that car's about this high off the ground, so that car is very familiar with those ruts. And it's not just my vehicle, but other vehicles. I've sent an email around to everybody, I think, describing some problems we've had there in the past. Now, I'm not the engineer, my suggestion was a storm drain in the center of the alley. That may not be the best solution, may not be the most cost effective. At one point, the city was going to shoot the alley, get elevation, but when they found out there was private property involved, that whole thing came to a stop, and that's why I'm here. I'd like to get that process going again, try to get a resolution. I heard some concerns about budgeting. I've been there for 30 years, I can wait two years to get on the budget, okay? So I just really would like you guys to consider this to be a problem that's not just for a certain number of homeowners, because that alley does get used quite a bit, especially by kids from the high school. So I guess that's where I'm at. Some of my other neighbors may have other ideas, but I really think that we could get the engineer in there, take a good look, try to find a solution that works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Mayor and council, I'm Bruce Reed without a hat. I live at 1070 Gilmore Avenue, and I've lived there for 32 years, the same as a lot of the residents have. This has been a problem for all those years, mainly it's in the center of it, but it's a problem for everybody, like Tom said, especially during the winter time. I've plowed that alley for 32 years, from the first snowflake to the last snowflake, and these last two winters that we've had is extremely, a lot of rain and ice and buildup, and I worry about not even being able to get through it with a four-wheel vehicle, plowing it, so I mean, the other people that use it have a tremendous effect on them too. A lot of them, the two-block area, I think there's only about three, three garages that don't use that alley, so everybody has to come and go through that alley. There's been another alley similar to that. If you know where Frank Morwicky lives, he lives on Broadway, between Broadway and Seventh and McBride and Olmsted Street. They did the same project pretty much three to four years ago, I'm just kind of guessing. They had, I went and plowed that alley for them when the ice and the thaw was there, and there's, really was no way of getting rid of the ice, so what they did is the city came in there and I think it was a pretty costly project to take care of. I think I heard numbers of over a couple hundred thousand dollars because of the way they had to do it and the drainage and all that, but it turned out good for them. I don't think the city's got any more complaints about it at all. Am I right, Keith, that the city does own the alleys pretty much, most of them?
Yes.
Right, other than there's a few sporadic ones, and nobody knew that until this issue just came up, so it's, it's, it's kind of the city's problem, they, we've had the problem and they've come in and they've veed out the center of the alley down there maybe four or five, six years ago to try to help that water flow out down to the west end of the alley. It doesn't work. It's worked a little bit, but it doesn't work. Comes springtime, all the neighbors, or a lot of them, we're out there with pickaxes, and I take my plow and I push the water out down the alley to try to help eliminate it. So it is a big problem, so I just kind of wanted to mention that, that it's just not Tom, but a lot of the other neighbors agree with that too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Fran Parma, I live at 1014 Gilmore. I drive that alley, that alley is my lifeline to Winona, Minnesota. If I don't go through the alley, I don't get out. I work very early in the morning, I have to get up extra early in the winter time, because if I do get stuck, which I have, I have to wake up my husband or wake up a neighbor to get me out of that alley. There's such ruts that if you get stuck in the wrong rut, you're stuck. And when it's water in the summertime like this and school has started soon, they will get the idea that there's water in that alley and they come flying through that alley so they can run through that lake really fast, so that's very dangerous that way too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay.
Joe Plunger, I'm 1032 Gilmore and I'm actually renting. Went through one winter and just want to support what everybody's saying, the alley is very bad. There's a lake from here off into the other room at this point from the rain today and last winter, just as Bruce and Tom talked about, very bad in the alley to get in and out. Fortunately, I have a four-wheel drive, but people who don't, I'm sure have a lot of problems with it, so I think you ought to do something with it.
Thank you. Any final comments? Okay. Jerry?
So what are the steps we have to do? I know what we've got in front of us, so one or two councilmembers last time asked what would the possibility, or how do we, you know, if we were to assess, and I see that's what's here. But is the first order of business, would it be on the bottom here, dedicating the land as a right of way? Is that the first step that we're talking about?
I would concur with that.
Keith?
Okay.
Keith has some comments?
Go ahead, please.
I guess my recommendation, the first step would be, how big a project do you want to make it? Is it, is it something you'd want, you know, ideal world, the whole alley becomes an alley, as opposed to now where it's just the ends and it involves all the properties along there. That involves all the property owners, there's a lot more potential for appealing that process. So that'd be step, that'd be one possibility. The other possibility would be to do the smaller project with the four property owners who have already signed and agreed to dedicate that.
Well, if we did the project as you're talking about it, with just the four property owners, is that a step in the, I mean, obviously it is, but that's a step in the right direction. If that doesn't work, then maybe we have to look a long way further, but it's a very potentially successful first step?
Yes, it'd be a big step in the right direction and then deciding how to pay for it, whether it's a success or otherwise.
Jerry, are you done?
No, now I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to-
I want to ask a question first.
Sure.
Can, I, I wanted to ask you a question before he moved on.
No pun intended.
How many properties would benefit from this smaller project? It sounds like it's a problem in the entire alley. So if we did the smaller project, how many people would benefit from the $29,000?
That probably would be determined in some form of legal discussion. Personally, I think they all would benefit from it.
The whole alley?
I think the whole alley would benefit from them. The ones at the other end would have somewhat of a case to say that they didn't benefit, but if they're using the alley, I would think they would all benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Keith, is the problem really concentrated in these four properties or is it throughout the alley?
Mr. Ryan, is that, is that the major area? That's the one that I'm most familiar with.
Well, Jerry was down yesterday.
George?
George, excuse me. He came to take a peek at it. Anyway, and I hadn't realized until I was back there with George that even as bad as the thing is, I've noticed that it's actually getting worse, okay? My apron, the apron to my driveway is now, it, apron to my garage is now involved. Joe's driveway is involved, his driveway actually starts to disappear now. If I look, stand by my property and look east, the water now probably goes 100, 150 feet east, so I'm guessing that putting a drain in, a storm drain, again, I'm not an expert here, a storm drain would drain all of that area, but if the alley continues to degrade, the chances of another high spot coming into play are there. You could end up, because the alley is so long, you could end up with another puddle 300 feet down east, and that's why my suggestion, and I'm surprised it hasn't been done, is a decent survey of that alley to find out exactly, my problem is my problem and it's been there a long time, but fixing my problem may not fix the next problem to come, you know, nobody can see the future. But, and concerning the people on the east end, the east end of the alley, just visually, is much higher than where I am. It has to be more than two feet would be my guess, it's, it's quite a rise. So the end, the six properties either side at the east end of the alley would probably see absolutely no benefit from doing this, and I think they would be averse to any sort of deal. I could hear them screaming already. But, you know, a majority of the people to the west of those properties would benefit greatly, just because as the ruts get bigger and bigger and the road becomes beat down, that water and ice continues to creep to the east, and, you know, like I said, this all hasn't, isn't new and it hasn't come up before because, like Bruce said, there's a bunch of us out there been taking care of it ourselves. But, you know, I'm getting a little bit old to snow blow 200 feet of alley any winter. It's getting a little tired, so that's where we're at.
This does seem to be the low spot.
Jerry?
All right, Keith. To start with this project right now, as it stands, the $29,000 one, in the event that a few years, the alley continues to degrade and five, six, seven years from now we have to revisit it, would this particular project be standalone, it wouldn't have to be dug up? I mean, this one here would be a benefit and would not create an issue later on if it had to be expanded?
When, yes, it would stand alone. What we would probably do is like they said, shoot, shoot the whole thing, do some kind of thought process of the whole thing, and if it would be a benefit, we'd run a pipe the other direction. process of the whole thing, and if it would be a benefit, we'd run a pipe the other direction, even if it doesn't go anywhere at this point, you know, a little beyond, up to the end of the alley that we're dedicating.
Okay. Here's what I'm trying to do tonight. I want to go ahead, and I'm not moving right now, I'm just telling you what the idea is. My initial thought tonight was to push this forward at twenty-nine thousand dollars as it was presented with no assessments, and if it flew, it flew. But now I'm hearing it may be more?
Twenty-nine thousand is just an estimate.
Okay. But it's-
Pardon me, but could it not be less?
Oh, sure.
I mean, the whole thing was based on some storm sewer-type fix. Does that, is that really the fix? Is that where the city is standing? Is that putting a hole in it around, is it going to be the only solution as far as-
Absolutely. It is not doable just by grading it alone. It's too long, too flat. So, yes, we have to do some kind of pipe.
So, the other plan you were talking about, it may be running another pipe even though it's not connected, would that add to this cost, the estimate?
That was not figured in this estimate. Correct.
Paul, I know Paul has a question.
Yeah.
Well, in a discussion that I had on the phone, and I've driven that alley about six times in the last two days, including after the rain, what was brought up in the conversation I had on the phone was, at one time, the city, there was an easement proposed through the property to take the water from the alley directly across the property onto Gilmore, which would not then necessitate running it down the length of the alley. It would simply create a, you could have a sump pump and tile it over to Gilmore. A whole lot less costly.
If I may, that easement through the property to Gilmore is the plan. That's the only way we can do it.
Okay. You're not running full length of the alley?
No, no, but it would, we would, the main plan is we would run a pipe from the alley to Gilmore Avenue. And then if it, if it would work to our benefit to run it somewhat up towards the east, we would run a pipe that direction in case there's some drainage in the future.
So, you're, what you're proposing in your estimate is a kind of a T?
Yes.
With it going to Gilmore as being the center of the T?
The main, yes, the main project is coming from the alley to Gilmore Avenue through the easement on the property.
And what I would say, if I was a property owner there for twenty-nine thousand dollars, I would certainly explore the possibility of putting a sump in there and powering it out to Gilmore.
That would only add to the cost, but we certainly will look at all those.
If individuals did it on their property?
Oh, I see. Gotcha.
Keith, is there any chance that by fixing these, the alley behind the four properties, you'll create new problems for other property owners?
We would, I don't believe so. We would grade it so it did not do that.
Pam?
Yes. I was looking at this map, and I, too, was out there driving down the alley, but what I noticed is that a lot of the, a lot of the area along the driveway, along the, along the alley has been now paved. The garages look like they're newer and bigger as they are becoming newer and bigger. There's a lot more paved areas, there's more aprons, and there's more, so the more impervious surface you have with big garages and driveways, the more water is going to run to whatever low area is around. And that makes this more than just four people's, four property owners' problem. It's a problem of water runoff, which we're going to be facing and are facing around the city. So, I really have come to think of it as the city's, something the city should take on.
Historically, alleys don't, have not drained in the past. Winona has chosen to seal coat them, which is great, it's easier in maintenance, but then they don't drain.
Right.
It doesn't go down into the gravel, but then it's less maintenance as well.
Michelle?
We all know how I feel about us paying for this project that's going to benefit one alleyway of which we do not own the entire, and I'm actually opposed to the city owning alleys. And I also do not believe that we can possibly provide this level of drainage to all of the alleys in the city where this is an ongoing problem. It's not just that alley. And since we do not have the money in the budget this year, I would rather them direct staff to look at that project in a bigger sense for the whole block, that whole alleyway, get a real sense of what the cost would be and where the most benefit would be, and look at budgeting something for the future or assessing something in the future, unless the people want to take on the assessment this year since we don't have the money in the budget. I think talking about the cost is premature because we don't, until we can actually do the project and you can get out there and look at it, I don't know that twenty-nine thousand is even accurate. And we don't know how many property owners may actually want to sign on to the project, making it possible to have a larger pool to assess, even if we only assess a portion of it. And I know you're going for no assessment, but personally, I think the property being improved needs to have some purchasing into the improvement. So, I guess I'd rather just look at what they're talking about down here, which is dedicating the land as a right-of-way and then directing staff to look at what we could actually do there to help these property owners, since we know it can't be done. We don't have the budget for it now. That's just what my preference would be. And I agree with you, Pam, all of the concrete and all of the impermeable surfaces is what's causing the problem. There's no place for the runoff to go. And I think it will be a bigger problem than those four properties because if the water does drain there, it's still going to be looking for another place to run to, and if we improve here, it's, I do think it would be a problem other places in the future as, was it Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Suggests it. It's not this next three years, and that's what water does, finds the path of least resistance. So, that would be my preference.
George?
What budget would this come out of?
My proposal to council would be a storm sewer budget, storm sewer utility.
And there's money in that budget, of course.
Yes, there is.
And now you're talking about draining it from the, from the center of the alley out to Gilmore. Would that then run into the storm sewer out there?
It would run into the back of an inlet in the storm sewer system, which means it's not very shallow. I mean, it's not very deep. It's quite a shallow system, but yes.
Jerry?
Okay. A lot of discussion. Let's have a motion. But before I do that, I still want to go back to my original question. And I think he answered it, but I want to make sure we do this thing right. Part of the motion would have to be dedicating this land as a right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay. Therefore, I would move that we dedicate this land as a right-of-way, go ahead with the proposed plan as outlined by the Director of Public Works with no assessments to the property owners.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by George. Further discussion?
I haven't, I've been waiting for a motion to comment on it, but I concur with the motion and the process. My main concern here is that, you know, I'm fine with going ahead and dedicating the land and all of that, but I would like to make sure that as we move forward, we're doing the right thing. In other words, we're solving a problem. As we discover elevations along that alley, I, again, as most of us have done, drove through that alley actually this afternoon and saw where the rain was puddling in that area. So, I think there was a problem. I talked to at least one of the residents there about that, and I think this is the right way to do it, and I want to have something that if we spend our money on it, we're going to solve a problem and solve it for a few years anyway before it becomes more of a problem that's been speculated here. We don't know that, but I think this is a easy way to solve, solve this issue.
Okay. Other comments?
I would ask for some clarification on what the motion is. What are we, what are we moving to do?
What we're moving to do is we're dedicating the land as a right-of-way. I guess that's step one in order to do this, but we're going to go ahead with the project as is proposed already, which would be the approximate twenty-nine thousand, which would be collecting, it seems like, the water at the lowest part of the alley and then directing that water out to Gilmore. And if possible, running it in a T fashion with a dead inlet that can always be added on to if things happen later on.
Clarification is, we're not dedicating the land. What we're asking is the property owners to dedicate the land for the alley to the city so that we can spend public money on it. So, it's not us giving land.
No, no.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think the motion should be for that part of it, to direct city staff to prepare the legal documents to dedicate the land. If that's the council's inclination, they shouldn't vote to dedicate the land, they should vote to allow city staff to prepare those documents and bring them back to the council.
Okay, but can I have that motion also end with the assessment? There'd be no assessment with the project, or do you, are you requesting two motions?
Separate motion for that?
I think we can do it either way. I think you give, the council can make separate motions or one joint motion.
Let's make it clean. I want it in one motion, as he said.
Everybody understand the motion? Any further questions?
Yes, the one thing was pointed out, and it should go, it's not in my verbiage, but there will be, a public hearing is going to be required for this process.
That would be if there is assessments.
Oh, so no-
If there's no assessments, you do not need a public hearing.
Perfect. Gotcha.
Other questions? Comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under new business, item five-point-one is a request for a public hearing regarding the liquor licenses issued to MC's VAR. This public hearing would be held at the next meeting, August eighteenth, at six-thirty PM.
Move to approve the hearing date.
Second. Motion by George, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item five-point-two is the transit grant application for the 2015 grant.
I'd make a motion, adopt the resolution.
Second. Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion? Al?
Just a question in our council, excuse me, in our council packet, it says the balance of operating costs will be funded through cash fares and bus passes and by advertising revenue from bus and bench ads?
Yep. Should just be bus.
Okay.
Just bus.
Because I know we replaced many of the, well, we replaced all the benches, and those are, I like those benches, and I'd hate to see them cluttered up by ads, if you will.
No, there's no plan to put advertising back on them.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item five-point-three is the renewal of the Winona State University Transit Service Agreement for the 2014-15 academic year. I'd move to approve the agreement and direct staff to execute the agreement.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Gary?
Item five-point-four is to set a recess meeting to certify the results of the city primary election. This recess meeting would be held next Friday at 10:00 AM.
Move to set that meeting?
Second.
Al, motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion?
I will not be able to with that.
I, I may not be there.
Okay. The rest of us apparently can, so. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Item five-point-five is the Winona Airport Runway 1230 Rehabilitation Grant Agreement.
Move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item five-point-six is a certified local government grant application from the Minnesota Historical Society.
Michelle?
Is Mark here? Oh, hi, Mark. Can you explain this to me, please?
Yeah, it may, on the surface, appear to be a little abstract, but as opposed to, as opposed to most of the CLG grants that we've had in the past, which were used to prepare nomination forms, either local or national register forms for various properties, in this particular case, what we're looking at doing is developing an education plan. The commission now has been in operation since 1990, and we've done a lot of things. But one problem that the commission continually brings up every year, we have a planning session every year, is that they don't feel that the community, community as a whole, really understands what it's doing, what it's for, what it's about. And this was also noted as a problem in our comprehensive plan update back in 2007. So, given those concerns, what we're trying to do is to bridge them by submitting this grant proposal, which would be used to hire a consultant to help us develop this general, broad educational plan. We're looking at, the grant itself would provide forty-five-hundred dollars in assistance that would be met with forty-five-hundred dollars at the local level. We're looking at straddling two years for the project, so some of the budget would come from this year, some from next. And so, that's where the forty-five-hundred in local match would come. These are typically fifty-fifty grants and grant the local share, either cash or in-kind services, that kind of thing. We're proposing all cash in this case. But again, the plan, or the proposal, the grant proposal is supported by the Minnesota Historical Society. We noted that it is supported by our comprehensive plan, and we hope that within a matter of eight months, we'll have some sort of a preservation plan we can use to promote preservation activities.
So, off of that, then, this would be a planning session between a professional historic planner of some sort?
Right. We'll hire a consultant. The way it'll work is we'd hire a consultant, as we do with most of our projects, and then that person would work in a number of steps. And if you had a chance to go through the grant proposal, it does involve a number of steps, beginning with the commission. We have a number, we've had quite a turnover in commissioners over the past couple, three years, and so we feel this would be a good time to exercise this project in that the first step would be to ask them who they think they are, and from that, develop their core values. And again, I'm trying to, maybe a little abstract with this, but develop their core values, and then those would translate into ultimately the preservation plan. So, the consultant in this case would act as the facilitator primarily. We stressed in the proposal that we understand that the commission does not act in a vacuum, that there are a number of entities that could serve to support what it's doing, and those, examples of those might be the County Historical Society, Main Street now, maybe Visal Winona, just an example. So, those entities would be pulled into the process. Where this project actually started was the commission was thinking about developing a website, similar to what the Port Authority has done for the city. Once it started thinking that through, the question arose as to what would be on the website? What should we be promoting? You know, what would be on it? And we just kept backing up, backing up, and we ended up with this project. So, once this project, project is completed, what we would hope to do is to maybe start working on tools like that that could help to promote the commission and its activities. We're thinking at this point that maybe, maybe it's not a commission, a freestanding commission website, for example. Maybe we team up with the County Historical Society and, you know, link to their site somehow, or maybe we don't do our own thing. But that's something that we hopefully will be able to see through this, this project.
So, this isn't really a way to help you get funding for these projects? It's just giving the commission a layout?
Right.
Because, of course, I started reading, it's, it's very big what you're trying to do. So, I was curious, once you got past this process, what you're funding? Are you hoping that, like, Main Street or Zilwinona can engage in, the city can engage in helping fund some of this?
This will develop a list of tools that we'll use. Now, down the road, it's conceivable that that list will help us secure funding for another grant or something. And maybe we could draw from these other entities to help out, to team up in doing that. Again, this is kind of a teamwork approach, and we're not doing it just for the commission, but we just see that for the city, if we can all work together, that there is value and power, actually. So, that's the way we hope to do with this.
Thank you, Mark.
Former longtime member of the Preservation Commission, I know that this kind of edu-
kind of, uh, education program's been talked about many years. Uh, I would think that by doing this work, it would open up to some other legacy grant applications or and some other funding in the future. So I, I would support this.
Other comments? We have a motion?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I would, I would, uh, move that the city manager be directed to grant, to execute grant agreement forms needed to begin.
Motion by Pam.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Al. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Let's, uh, start with George tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all I really have tonight is just two birthday greetings. One to Loretta Westland yesterday, who celebrated her ninetieth birthday, and to our mayor's mother, who will be celebrating her one hundredth birthday. Happy birthday to her.
Thank you.
And did you want us to sing, or just send it along?
I do. I would love it if you would sing.
Okay, well, we will all sing together.
A solo by George, maybe. No, let's not sing.
Thank you.
Pam?
Uh, I just wanted to, I just wanted to talk about the new park benches that are, that are around in the town, which I really admire.
Bus benches?
The bus benches, excuse me, bus benches that have been placed both at, at places where the, the buses do stop and also nearby spots. I've seen people sitting, sitting, uh, at, at, on these, I don't know if they're waiting for the bus or if they're just sitting. They seem to be quite comfortable. And I think it just lends a, lends a kind of civilized, civilized mood to the, the town. And I appreciate the project that brought it to be.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
I think, I, uh, would like to see if the city, uh, attorney can investigate the possibility if we can create any leverage on repairing the roadways where the railroad tracks cross. Um, whether they be state aid roads, and the state would have authority to intervene. But I'd like to see something in effect like our grass ordinance is, that says that we notify you, you've got thirty days. If within thirty days you don't fix it, uh, we'll come in, we'll fix it, we'll send you a bill. And, um, I'd like to see if we have that leverage in statute to be able to do that. And, uh, and maybe that will get some action on getting some of these crossways, uh. And even if we have the ability to tack on, say, a twenty-five percent administrative fee, to go through the hassle of getting them to do their jobs.
Okay, thank you. Michelle? Kerry? Um, over the years, from time to time, it comes up about, uh, what's the best way to hear public comments at our city council meetings? And public hearings have been exceptional for that, but that's usually a, a, a single item issue. So if possible, I would like administration to come back to us with some ideas on a manner in which we could have a public comment period, a few minutes at each meeting. Or maybe, I know at some counties or places, it might be the first meeting of the month, something along that line. Um, just come back with ideas. And this may be something that would be too lengthy to discuss. It might be where it can be sandwiched in at a pre-council meeting where we can spend fifteen to thirty minutes talking about it. It's a pretty important issue. It's, it's not really time sensitive, but, uh, and it comes up from time to time, but I'd like it if we could talk about it officially in some capacity. Then also, I'm, I'm happy to hear that you were saying that there's an upcoming air quality meeting, and that, uh, if I heard you right, that's coming up, and there will be, the dates will be coming out to us, or?
Yes, as soon as the meeting can be set.
Good, thank you very much.
There will be a public meeting, but sitting at the table will be the elected officials and the appointed officials.
Yeah.
Um, I, I assumed everybody in council had a rather interesting note from, uh, Mike Potvin regarding, uh, why we need to restore Latch Beach before we mess with the levee. I thought it was a very intriguing letter. I appreciate him taking the time to write it and to send it to us, and send along a little button that says, "Restore the, the beach," and, um, I, I think that, you know, we need to put that somewhere in the planning process to at least examine that, to, uh, to not continue to ignore it, but make sure it's a part of this whole process with levee renewal and levee park. That, the consultant we hired talked about the park has a river running through it while John Latch Beach is a part of that park. So it was, uh, very interesting to read that story. And, uh, again, to our mayor's, uh, mother, a happy, uh, birthday coming up. I understand she lives about three doors down from Tim Walz in Maccater.
We live very close to each other.
To each other there, so that's kind of nice. Hopefully, there'll be a little congressional, you know, greeting, uh, on his part as well.
He's invited.
And, uh, while we're talking birthdays, I want to wish my son, Brian, a very belated thirty-ninth birthday. That was yesterday. So, that's all I have today.
Okay, thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are three items. Approve the minutes from July twenty-first, a claim against the city by Ted Hazelton, a claim against the city by Doreen Moche.
Move to approve the consent agenda? Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
We don't adjourn, right?
Move to recess.
I move to recess.
Do we have to vote? Okay, we'll vote. To recess. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're in recess.